Progress.
All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025. It's 10:05 a.m. My name is Ty Mentor, Chair of the Board, to my left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Grant is virtual and Commissioner Klaus is in, is traveling and not present today. The meeting is being livestreamed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that's an error in the, in the agenda, but we're doing live streaming again and so hopefully that's working well. And written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the board. Action may be taken at this meeting. We have a proposal to add a closed session to the original agenda and County Manager, can you describe what's going on?
Yeah, thank you so much. There is a need for us to talk with our labor negotiator about an item and it popped up yesterday after the posting, so our request is that the board consider amending the agenda by adding the closed session and there's the RCW related. The other item is the Board of Equalization update. Our request is that we move that until the beginning of the new year so that we have time to discuss some of these other topics today.
Okay, is there a motion then?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the agenda to add a closed session pursuant to RCW 42.30.140 subsection four, collective bargaining sessions with employee organizations including contract negotiations, grievance meetings and discussions relating to the interpretation or application of a labor agreement or be that portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations or grievance or mediation proceedings or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress and to move the Board of Equalization update until after the first of the year.
For a second.
Discussion on that motion. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so then we'll go to bylaws, chapter one review.
One other item, I'll hand over to the clerk just to make an announcement about an item that was noticed and may have caused some confusion.
This afternoon's appeal hearing agenda for 3 p.m., there is a mistake on the reference in the closed session, references the Hillside Farms appeal and that should state Johnson Creek project that we are having the hearing on today. And so we've reached out to Mr. Rendler and provided some context on that and the minutes for this afternoon's appeal hearing will reflect the cracked project. So just, just a heads up too.
Just wanted to state that for the power.
And then lastly, real quick, just clarification that in addition to the livestream, the meeting is recorded and also posted to the YouTube channel and our website within 24 hours still.
Okay. Bylaws?
Yeah, we can do bylaws first.
That's what's on first. See, so we had a table of contents, we had a couple of sections. I had given a few comments myself. I know Commissioner Grant did. I haven't had a chance to scrutinize hers.
They're basically the same.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It was really funny reading through both of them and being like, oh.
With the same thought, okay.
Same thought.
Is there any other input? Were you the only two that gave input or?
Yes. So the original draft, chapter one was sent out a few weeks ago and we provided some time to receive commissioner feedback. We received comments from two commissioners, only Commissioner Mentor and Commissioner Grant.
Sent an email saying that I approve of your comments.
Okay.
That was, that was received.
Commissioner Fornier did send an email. There were some, you know, possible, possible future things that, but you did, so yeah, I just want to make sure that he's on record as responding and.
There was some feedback, I guess, regarding amendments, like the way I, I was kind of picturing the, the chair, vice chair meetings as an opportunity to have like a rules subcommittee where they could review changes to the bylaws or proposed changes to the bylaws just to have like a, it's, it's, it's essentially a subcommittee where these, these can be continued, continually reconsidered or worked on. Something, I, I, something to think about.
And also Commissioner Klaus did respond to the clerk and mentioned that she was looking forward to hearing, I guess, other commissioners' comments. So.
Yeah, I only really had two, I'm looking at, Commissioner Grant and I both had the same thought. I didn't really see the need to have the chair as a gatekeeper. Like, I didn't understand why a bylaw amendment couldn't just be like any other business item and be proposed by a commissioner and put on, I mean, for discussion. So I didn't, I, I removed that sort of gatekeeper of the chair piece. And then the other piece I had was just the way it was, the way, when it said the board elected to delegate executive authority to county manager, I just, I tried to reword that. I thought that was kind of sort of strong and not super clear in terms of what it meant. So I tried to soften it a little bit. My proposal was the board delegates day-to-day executive authority to a county manager appointed by the board. Not Sheriff Commissioner Grant.
Isn't there a, it's not an ordinance, but isn't there some type of MOU that speaks to that that could be referenced? Like, what was that, there's a policy that we established, right?
Resolution.
Yeah, that's funny, Commissioner Grant. You almost had, we almost had the same word.
Yeah.
Could that be, a resolution be referenced in that paragraph?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. So maybe with, yeah.
And it describes in detail the dynamics between the board and the county manager.
So maybe circulate, like take those, those edits and circulate a final, proposed final section that we can approve next week or something.
Sure.
Be good to get a couple of chunks done and move forward.
Yeah.
What's the next step? Like, once we, once we finish these, what's the next piece?
Chapter two will be coming your way very soon and potentially even before chapter one is approved.
Chapter two has a lot of stuff in it.
It is.
So that's, that involves, if you look at the table of contents, that's meeting schedule, quorum, yeah, a lot of, that'll be chunky. Okay, everybody's comfortable then, it sounds like with?
Yeah, it sounds good.
All right, thanks. Thank you for that, ma'am clerk.
Yeah, I just want to give special recognition to the clerk for following the board's direction but pulling this together and coming up with a pathway for review and approval in addition to all this stuff. This time of year is super busy, so thank you, Amy, for the coordination you're doing with a lot of meetings in a time that's kind of compressed. Appreciate your hard work.
Next up, okay, is our closed session. So again, we went over this, but we've now added this to the agenda. It's a closed session pursuant to RCW 423140 subsection four, collective bargaining sessions with employee organizations including contract negotiations, grievance meetings and discussions relating to the interpretation or application of a labor agreement or that portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning to adopt, planning or adopting strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations or grievance or mediation proceedings or reviewing proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress. Collective bargaining is what we're going to be addressing. Thirty minutes is proposed and.
I would say maybe we, we start with fifteen and then if we need to, we can.
Extend. Okay, so fifteen minutes. It's 10:14. Let's go to 10:30 in closed session and we'll call, we'll extend if needed.
Josh.
Recording stopped.
Okay, we've completed our closed session and there's no legislative board action to follow that. And we're up to item four, which is 2026-27 Bionium Budget Development Final Deliberations. And County Manager?
Yeah, thanks so much, Commissioners. Wanted to, I'll kick off, if we can bring up the PowerPoint?
That'd be great.
I'll just kick off this presentation and then hand over to Summer. I'm thankful for the organization and for the Board's hard work that they did over the last several months. This was not an easy year. I'm also thankful for Resolution 15932 that talks about the balanced budget. Just to give some quick context, I'll go through these slides fairly fast. You know the next slide, please? This is what we presented back in September. We're staring at a deficit that was structural to the county. And in 26-27, it only got worse. And so what the Board did over, I think it was about a four-week period of time, spending a tremendous amount of time and energy in looking at the information and the numbers. They were able to take a 26% reduction and whittle that down through strategic decisions and activation of revenue and adjusting certain expenses to the final reduction, where we see the 9.84. And it's wonderful to see that some of the key critical services, offices, departments, were able to see a significant reduction. Some saw no cut because of the core services are so essential. I think hearing from the Board that they believe all the departments are valuable and important to the operations that we serve the public with, but yet the money just still had to come from somewhere. The reason we showed the other slide is to remind and provide the context that we're dealing with a biennial budget bill. There's a significant difference in the revenue we have to pay our bills versus the expenses that have grown over time, which necessitated reductions. And then, next slide, just to talk a little bit about TC Connect and to kind of frame it, where we're at, the county ambitiously took on a major financial system enhancement
That's a lot even broader in financial.
That affects our payroll operations, that affects the interactions with the Budget Office, the Auditor's Office, human capital. Like we did the full suite. Everything that we had systems to cover and do are being enhanced. And it's not unusual for organizations to take multiple years to transition, understanding that the City of Olympia recently, in the last several years, went through a system migration and they were working on it for over two years. Things are better than when we first implemented, but it's still a work in progress. That does not mean that the budget information is unreliable. What it means is that it's taking a lot more time for staff to do the work that they were able to do in the other system quite easily. It's a transition to create new workflow, new pathways. And like in any system transition, there are things that are being worked through with a, what is it called, the Executive Steering Committee, TC Connect, which is the governance structure. I'm very appreciative of Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker, that after a competitive process was selected to lead that team. And so we're working those changes through. So while the system has difficulties generating reports, the data in the system is complete and can be visually confirmed, manually pulled and pivoted to verify accuracy. So that's important that we don't communicate to the public from the staff's side that the system has bad information or we can't get the information out. It's the process of working with the approach that the team has implemented with a vendor that's helping us work through system reports and other things. So it's been a very labor-intensive process, not just for the folks at this table, but for anybody that touches those systems. Our HR staff, Tara was here, and things that she could do within seconds is now sometimes taking a day or two. Is that the way it's always going to be? No, there's a path that we are on to fix that and work it through. But that is typical when you're doing a system migration and you're having so much information that you're having to work through and working with vendors to make sure you're fine-tuning it so that it operates the way it needs to. So we are one year in to what could be a two, a two-and-a-half-year process of change, but I know that the team is committed to me, working that through. So just a huge thanks to everyone that helped work on this process in a very unusual time, in an environment where, like I learned at the WAC Conference in Spokane, when I was interacting with other county leaders, it wasn't, "Do you have to cut the budget?" The question on everyone's tongue is, "How much do you have to cut your budget?" Every other county executive and leadership staff that I talked to, including electeds, were talking about the work they were doing, cutting their budgets, and some even more significant than us. So I appreciate that the fact that we were able to say we were almost through that process, where some were just getting started. Don't know how they were doing that so late in the game because they said they had weeks to finish it. Where the Board took a strategy to talk about this throughout the year. And we've had a number of significant meetings all throughout the year. And I appreciate the Board and the budget team and the entire organization's commitment to that process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Summer unless there are any questions from Commissioners. Take it away, Summer.
Thank you. Good morning again. I appreciate the acknowledgement of the hard work of the staff across the county. It has been a bit challenging, but I know that we are all committed to bringing forth the best product that we possibly can. So just as a reminder to the Board, these, on slide number five, this is the page one of two of General Fund Approved Submitted Requests for the 26-27 Bionium Build. This includes all previously reviewed, recommended-to-adopt items, as well as any edits that the Board has directed us to make, and the ERADA 1 and Version 2 items. All information you have seen before. Moving forward, we have all other funds approved. There are four slides encompassing all of the requests that were submitted. Again, information that's been reviewed with you, that you have approved to move forward, either as it was submitted or with edits. Not new information. When we get to slide number 11, this is the capital requests approved. Again, previously reviewed and approved by the Board, including all of the submitted items and the ERADA list. And then now we're going to move to 12. So slide 12 is the final Version 3 ERADA operating requests. Many of these requests that are before you are additional items or changes or reductions. The reduction packages were clarified here. This, the bottom two lines, I just want to call out for you, were additions from the prior information sent out to you. In our review, we recognized that we had overstated the reduction to the Clerk's Office, so we're reducing that here. And then the Assessor's Office, we are recommending that a continuation of funding for mailing costs that were approved by the Board in Amendment 2 earlier this year in the amount of just under $53,000, so $53,000 in ongoing funding to ensure that the cost of mailing is covered for that office.
Can you explain the Clerk item again?
The Clerk had a target, I believe, of 1.5 million approximately originally, right at the 26%, 36 million. As the Board took actions and restored some of the reduction, on October the 22nd, the Board chose to restore some dollars to the Clerk's Office, to Superior Court, I believe it was, and possibly Juvenile Court. We failed in the last ERADA to the Board to true that figure up, so I wanted to make sure that we called that out for you so that the Clerk's Office doesn't experience a higher reduction than what the Board directed on the 22nd.
The number on slide three is accurate?
Yes.
777.
Yes, that is correct.
I just wanted to make sure that there's no discrepancy there.
Yeah, no, it's 777,000. And we just wanted to make sure that we called that out, that the Board is aware that we've made this change and that we true up that figure.
Summer, do you want to mention in this forum the conversation and potential opportunity that may take more bedding that was relayed to you from the Assessor's Office?
Absolutely, yes. So I had a phone call this morning with the Assessor regarding the mailing costs that were captured earlier this year and did not roll forward in the budget. You know, that commitment to let the Board know that we recommend that you continue that funding as we move forward. The Assessor has offered potentially a reduction in his general fund budget in the amount of $136,000. So if we take the additional 53,000, the net difference is an $83,000 general fund reduction that he's willing to offer to the Board.
So we, what our recommendation would be is to allow time for Summer, the Assessor's team, to kind of work that through and then we can bring it back as a potential amendment once we get all the details dialed in.
Okay. Thank you for following up.
You're welcome.
That was information that I got and didn't confirm Ms. Klaus who's traveling. And so I kind of put it on Summer to kind of go straight to the Assessor and figure out the details. So I appreciate you working that through. And if there's something that can be done there, then we will hear about that.
We appreciate the Assessor, his creativity and forward-thinking about ways in which he can provide additional savings to the county. So allowing the budget team to finish the budget and then to work with them on the back end, it would be helpful. And we can bring it back in amendment if it's, if everything lines up the way it needs to line up.
So that will be brought forward as an amendment? Okay, so then moving on to the next slide. Number 13, this is the final ERADA list for the capital requests that were submitted. Many of these are just changing rollover budget authority and ensuring that we're capturing everything. There are some projects here for Central Services. There was, there was some lost or non-submitted items, I think, in staff transition. So we made sure to follow up with the Director of Central Services and gather this information to ensure that the projects that are on schedule now continue after the first of the year with no delay. And that is all that we have for you as far as the changes on the ERADA, the last two slides. So we're recommending that the Board approve the submissions and the approvals that you've made through the last two reviews and provide us direction on how you'd like us to move forward. And we will have final adoption on December 16th, which is a Tuesday. And then next Tuesday, December 9th, we will bring you the levy certifications.
Any questions for Summer or discussion points for the Board? Any motion to approve the?
You'll make the motion on budget adoption on December 16th. So today it would just be that you're giving us, I guess?
Yeah, to give you direction to put it on for final adoption?
Yes, that as it's submitted to you today.
I move that we approve the 2026-2027 Bionium Budget and place it on the agenda for final adoption.
Does that work?
Yep.
Maybe? Okay, thank you.
Discussion on the motion? During that, call for the vote. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Ah, nay.
Okay, that motion carries. So that's it for that item?
Yep, we're done.
Thanks, thank you.
Last item for the agenda for the work session is the Resolution of Support for the Flood Authority of Chehalis Basin. I can give a little bit of a thumbnail on this. And several years ago, the Chehalis Basin Strategy, which has kind of resulted from the flooding of 2007 and work that's been done across the basin to work on a joint, dual strategy of?
Can you readmit?
Okay, start over.
Sorry.
Yeah, so the last item is the Proposed Resolution for Support of Flood Authority for Chehalis Basin. I'm just giving, going to give a little historical thumbnail of this. That when I was on the Flood Authority a few years ago, there was, essentially, the funding from the legislature has been robust in trying to, to fund a dual strategy for aquatic species restoration as well as flood, mitigation of flood damage, all the kind of coming out of 2007 Lewis County and Chehalis River flooding. So there's a constant effort to try to make sure legislature knows this is important to the communities across the basin and keep that funding flowing because we're working, they're working on a big set of projects. It might result in a flood retention, like a dam type thing. Or there's alternatives, there's a local alternatives being analyzed. So it's not, it's not clear what will result in terms of the flood piece, but a lot of different local projects have been funded and a lot of aquatic species habitat stuff has been funded. So there's broad support for kind of the process. So they like to have, kind of at key moments, kind of all the communities come together and, you know, pass resolutions of support. So they like to have kind of at key moments, kind of, all the communities come together and, you know, pass resolutions of support. Thurston County has never taken a position with respect to whether Thurston County Board supports a, any kind of dam structure. We have been supportive of the process. And there's, you know, so what I did is, having done this a couple few years ago, Commissioner Fornier showed it to me and I had a meeting with the, some of the folks. And I basically took their proposed, what they really want is to show that Thurston County supports the process. Like, they don't really care what the exact verbiage is. They want to be able to hold up a packet of resolutions and say, "Everybody supports this process. Please, please continue to fund our, our efforts." So I just tried to take out language that was inconsistent with the Thurston County's position of, of kind of hedging. I mean, we, we have taken the position in the past that we want to see what the total, the total analysis of the land alternatives are and, and see what the, you know, what the tribal input is and all, and kind of still, you know, jury's still out from Thurston County's perspective on whether we would support a, a flood retention facility like has been proposed. The one that they've done, they've made a lot of modifications too. It's very, it's very unique and sort of unprecedented in terms of its design, but there are still environmental impacts and stuff. So what I did is to try to be a good team player with our, with our, with our partners on the Flood Authority is I just tried to, you'll see the original and then you'll see my proposed line edits. And I would, I would personally be comfortable signing or voting in favor of something like what I edited because it, it sort of says that we, we understand the problem, we're partners in the process, we want to keep the process moving forward. But it kind of removes some of the statements about being supportive of the dam because I think our community, there's quite a bit of division about that. And until I see all the data and all the analysis and, you know, I, I haven't, I haven't taken any position in the years. I was on Flood Authority, I don't know about Commissioner Fornier, but, so my proposal would be to pass the resolution in the form that I've edited or something like it. That's kind of the background. We could do, so just to give you another, when this came up a few years ago, we decided not to do it. So Thurston County actually didn't sign the resolution. We talked about it, the other Commissioners didn't know a lot about it. I didn't push it and we ended up just shelving it. But, you know, like I say, I'm, I think it's important when we, when they go to the legislature and ask for this funding to keep going, which is doing a lot of good work in a lot of different, from a lot of different angles, I, I'm okay with a scaled back one.
This was a lot of different things that their work encompasses. I think we, most of us took a tour of, last year of some of the projects where they're raising houses in Buquota, they're putting in pump stations and, and drainage ditches in Aberdeen and, and things of that nature. So it's, it's, it's more of a, like, it's a strategy more than specifically, naming projects that we support. So I, I, I think you hit the nail on the head. Does Scott, do you have anything to add or?
Hey Scott, you're here.
I am here.
Did I hit it?
You did.
Okay.
I think that-
Can you come up? I didn't realize you were here.
Yeah.
Scott has been integral to all of this effort and he'll answer. I don't know why I was even talking, knowing that you're here. He can answer any question you have about-
He was just sitting behind you shaking his head.
Scott Venture, I'm staff to the Shalas River Basin Flood Authority and I've been in that capacity since about 2011. I'm a private consultant, I'm under contract to Lewis County as the fiscal agent for the Flood Authority. I think everything that Commissioner Mensah said is correct. We are collectively in a process called the Shalas Flood Strategy Process. And what's important to know about that is, A, we are doing projects on the ground, pumps, treatment plant protection, flood warning system, habitat. Those things are all happening, well, bigger picture projects are being looked at too as part of a strategy. And the strategy is to help people, the environment, fish, so we don't have a catastrophe like we did in 2007. We, because we are all banded together and working so well, the legislature has funded biennium after biennium, bi after biennium. Six biennium, strong, healthy sums of money that allow us to tackle problems on the basis of information. And so this process that we're in is fundamentally about discovering the information that is needed to understand impacts to whom, to what, et cetera, and to act accordingly. So your participation of support helps ensure that we get another healthy round of analysis. And we came up here, I think in July, and talked to you about some of the projects in Thurston County. We shared with you the, the video that was proposed for the conceptual dam, you've seen that. A lot of stuff is going on and the fact that so many people have supported this process has enabled the funding to continue. And so we welcome your support for this process.
Any questions for Scott or can, or concerns about passing the resolution?
I'm okay with it, thank you so much.
Yep. Okay, can we just, can we just take a vote to?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we sign the, the revised version of the resolution, continuing support, Thurston County Support for Basin-Wide Solution, Flooding and Aquatic Species Restoration.
So that's a good answer, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, the resolution needs to go to legal for their-
Pending legal review.
Pending legal review. Seconded by a committee.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the motion?
Thank you, Commissioner Mensah, for your work on this. And Scott, thank you so much for being here today.
Absolutely, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Pending legal review, the Clerk will apply the electronic signature.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
You bet, absolutely.
That's the end of the agenda, we're adjourned until, do you have something else to do?
Oh, I do, but-
Appeal hearing.
Oh, yes, we have an appeal hearing at three. So nothing Board, nothing for the full Board until three. Commissioner Grant, will you be virtual at three?
Yes, virtual at three.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.